Good afternoon. Let's call today's Board of Trustees meeting to order at 4:01 PM. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Felkowski.
Present.
Epic. Martin. McTomey. Nunley.
Here.
Sheets. Spence.
Here.
Swanson. Zibble.
And if we could please stand for the pledge.
I'd like to testify of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Zibble, would you like to read the mission statement?
Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents, with special emphasis on meeting the transportation needs of senior people.
Thank you very much. I did forget you have a minor cold, so I do apologize for that. Are there any public comments in the room today? Seeing no public comments, the next agenda item is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Board Meeting Minutes of March 28, 2022? Motion made by Ms. Nunley, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Spence. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Sheets. Spence. Yes. Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. We have approved the meeting minutes of March 28, 2022. Is there a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official pursuant to Section 121.22 G1 of the Ohio Revised Code? Motion made by Mr. Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Nunley. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Sheets. Spence. Yes. Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And for this executive session, the board will invite our CEO, Mr. Capel, to stay along with our CFO. Okay, everyone, we are back live on Zoom for our meeting, so let's resume. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Ben for a follow-up, I believe, on headquarters and grant overview.
Yeah, so I just wanted to provide a quick couple of numbers for the board that are estimates that me and my team came up with. They are not from an architect or an engineer, but I did kind of want to give you some things to think about. So what I took from the last meeting is that the board talked about three sort of options, not that these have to be all of them, these are just the three options that were kind of outlined, which was option one, move forward with the full project. Option two, more forward with the ad hoc projects that have been discussed previously, or option three, do nothing. Option three, I kind of, it's kind of a quotes because there's still things that would have to be done at some point, maybe not right away, but there's still some projects that have to take place. So what I wanted to do was put some numbers in front of everybody after I got some more numbers from Bowen. So there was still some sort of ambiguity about how much it would cost to reengage the architects to do the project, so I got a number from them. I was very pleasantly surprised. It was lower than I expected. So they have put in writing they would finish the project for $108,000, $108,700. That would take the project to conclusion. So that was a pleasant surprise as a option that exists for us. The full, the estimate from April of '21 was that number at the top, $18,067,000. So I wanted to put the construction and design subtotal, which is that 18,176 number. We have a little bit more funding than that total from the grant and the local match combined. Important takeaway here is to look at the local dollars. So that's the number that would come out of our cash balance. So these are estimates. These numbers would most likely go up because the world has gone up. I don't know what those numbers are. Bowen has not been there on pause, so they haven't been paid to provide any more estimates. So this is the latest info I've got. Me and my team sat down together to really try and put some estimates on the ad hoc projects. These are our estimates. These have not been reviewed by an engineer consultant, so there would be some changes. Number one, to design all of them, because there's, some of them, there are not substantial changes from the original plans. Some of them are essentially completely new concepts. So the number I got back from Bowen to do all that, if we were to use them, would be 472,135. I did, when I asked for that number, it is broken down by individual projects. So I do have that in a more detailed fashion. I just didn't present it here, but there is a number for each item. So we went through the, the numbers the board had, or the projects the board had previously identified and tried to guess based on our recent construction project history and just try and put a number on paper. It, these are really hard to just estimate without an engineer architect giving you an estimate, so my guess is these are all probably a little low. The thing we didn't want to do is go way too high or way too low. We just did our best to guess. Right now, these don't have any grant dollars associated with them, so the local dollar would be right around $4.8 million. Option three, this is what I call the do-nothing list. I say do nothing because some of these things are things that are just building maintenance activities that can't be ignored. We tried hard to identify project-specific things that we could do versus other stuff that might be more of a gray area. And, and none of this has to be done today, you know, I'm not saying immediately all these things need to be addressed. A lot of these things have problems that will need to be addressed in the next few years. You know, I think one of the best examples is, so admin/ops HVAC. It's the HVAC that came with the building. We did replace one rooftop unit, but the controls are 30 years old. There's only one vendor in Cleveland that works on them and getting parts is incredibly difficult. So it works today, but there's going to be a day where unplanned, all of a sudden, the thing breaks, we're going to have to rip it all out and redo it because we can't get the parts for it. Other stuff you guys have seen, like the driveway and some other things. So we, again, we did our best to estimate. Some of these have numbers associated with them from actual estimates that were done in the past or from some of Bowen's numbers. Others, you know, I can't use Bowen's numbers because their HVAC was for a different space, so it ends up being a different sort of configuration and dollar amount. So we did our best to estimate them. So again, as of today, there's no federal dollars in here. This didn't transfer super well. So I wanted to kind of put those all up as comparisons for the board, not to suggest one over the other, but to give you an idea of what it looks like coming out of our local cash. So if we did the full project, as of the estimate in April, we would be right around 3.6 million in cash. That number's inevitably going to go up. Option number two, we'd be looking at the full 4.8 million in cash. That number probably will go up too. Option number three, quote, do nothing. That number is even harder to estimate because it doesn't necessarily have to all be done at the same time. You know, you could do it over a couple of years. So those numbers also probably are going to go up. So I was just trying to at least give the board a concept, you know, and not make, none of these are firm. These are all sort of estimates that we did, not as engineers, architects. And the other thing, I know there was a question about that a couple of you asked me about is how, what about the grant? Can we use part of it or do we have to use all of it? So Andrea double-checked with FTA, and the only way she can obligate those funds in the federal grant-making system is to obligate the full amount. So we can't say, we can't tell the feds like, hey, we've sort of changed our minds. We want to do half the project, take half back, let us keep half. They won't do that. They've said, you know, it's the full amount or it's nothing, you know, take your pick. And so I didn't have more than that. I just wanted to kind of put that all out there for conversation. The big thing is I did get firm numbers from Bowen for the project. I would say if there was any desire to do one or two, one, you would need to keep Bowen because they've already done a huge amount of work. Two, if you really wanted to, we could hire a different engineer-architect if the board doesn't like them. Three, you know, it'd be a per-item thing and it would be a quote with a vendor versus a quote from an architect-engineer, except for the one thing on this list that would require some architecture and engineering is the maintenance offices slash locker rooms. There is a real problem in the maintenance bathrooms. You know, there is not enough space for the employees, which is a big problem for them changing their clothes, showering, storing their personal belongings. That is something that I just, you know, I don't see any way to get around. So that would require some engineering, not anywhere near what we've done in the past. So that was really what I wanted to do, is just give you those kind of high-level thoughts. I wouldn't, you know, these numbers look pretty specific. Maybe that was, I should have been a little more generic, but we wanted to, you know, we spent quite a bit of time in my office, me and Matt and Keith and Andrea, and talking about this and what number is the right thing for each thing, and we did our best to estimate based on, you know, the previous two transit centers we built and some of the other projects we've done. So it's an educated guess. But that's really all I have.
So if someone wants to spend the entire grant money, they would select option one, which is local funds cheaper than the ad hoc projects. And the next step would be to assign firm numbers to the project because this is all theoretical. And that would include re-engaging the architects for just under $109,000. Is that a fair summary of where we're at?
If the board wished to, option one, yes, that is a fair summary of where we're at.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for discussion.
How, can you go back to the option two, all the ad hoc projects? How did you come up with this list? I guess I would have, I was thinking that you would like kind of build it up to the full, like, 18 mil to see and then go from that point on, picking and choosing potentially what you could or could not want, or grouping them.
It's my fault.
Oh, okay.
I was beating Ben up over lunch one day and I said, why don't you give me a list as part of the building committee? Why don't you give me a list of what you think we could work on, on a piecemeal basis without knocking down walls, exterior walls. And so this was things that we came, came up with that would stop from expanding the footprint of the building, but get some of the very significant things done that we thought we needed to get done. So that's sort of where that came from.
Which number? We created that in my office within the last 30 days. But again, this number is not based on any market analysis, construction, you know, it's, this is Ben and his team's estimate, not another one. Those ones cost money.
The top number.
Yeah, the top number is the, that's a quote from Bowen. That's the top number. I would say, if, if the board said, hey, we really liked these lists, there are some things on here that it would be financially prudent to have Bowen do, like the driver's room and dispatch, because that is fundamentally what they've already designed. Maintenance, like another example is maintenance room, maintenance offices and lockers. That's sort of a whole new project, so that could be designed by anybody. So there would be, I, I could, in theory, go through these and say which one would recommend Bowen, which one would recommend somebody else. We made these numbers up with our best guess, so I don't know. We took previous construction projects and looked at them, tried to estimate what they would cost. So in a way, yes, in a way, no. I mean, it's, it's, I, I hesitated even showing these because they're so conceptual in nature.
Down to this list could be $2 million and it could be, or it could be $8 million. And I don't mean to, and I'm not trying to disrespect anyone on Ben's team, but they're not cost-quoting projects. Like, this isn't their expertise. So this is a little bit of a shot in the dark. It's an educated guess for people not involved in the engineering and construction industry.
And technically, you wouldn't know that until you picked a CM or CMAR and they did estimates for you to go out to bid for all this stuff.
Right.
So if we went back to option one, could you tell design? Sorry, I'm thinking in my head. Could you possibly, well, I guess, I guess you'd pick with the CM. There has to be some type of alternates where you could be able to choose to not go over anything that you've been given in the grant, correct? Like, would, would we look to do more, like, you know, you get this design for 18, if we just say, yeah, we want to do the full project, but now they come back, oh, it's 20 million. I don't.
Oh, so you're looking at what, how, how do we cap the number we spend?
Why are you, why are you looking to do that with option one?
Well, what I would probably do is, the way this was originally done from the construction management was design, bid, build. So we would need to have Bowen do a new construction estimate, which is then the number we go to bid with, which would probably be higher than this. If we wanted, if the board said we're okay with this project, but you will not spend a dime more than the grant number, the total funding availability, I would probably need to talk to Bowen and say, hey, this is our absolute limit. We're going to have to go back and because of inflation, probably make some adjustments in the previous design to be able to do that. They did ask me when I got the design number, do you plan any redesign? And I said, at this moment, no. So if we are, if we did want to go back and do some of that process, the design number would come up.
Correct. Right.
And how many months old is this number?
It's from April of '21.
And what was the per-month cost of?
When I saw Turner's construction, it was going to be about $100,000 a month.
So we've already, in theory, exceeded, which is an interesting question you have.
Yeah, just to see if there's places then that, I mean, that, that Lake Tran and you guys are willing to cut from, to not go over if we were to do full. So just something to think about.
We could do some add deducts, the documents to, to help modify that if we need to.
Yeah, I, I think, well.
Was your intent really just to show us comparison of the numbers of which, through the different options, to show that
Yeah.
option one wasn't the cheapest for the local monies, but certainly was cheaper than doing a few of the other projects.
Yeah, I, I think the takeaway is really that this is going to be the order of magnitude for all these things as a whole for options one, two, and three. I think that you're, no matter how you slice some of them, option one was, is always going to be in the middle, option two is always going to be the most expensive locally, and option three is going to be the cheapest with local dollars.
Not if it gets spread out over 10 years.
Well, I mean, you know, I could slice and dice this a lot of ways, but today, I think that the cheapest, you know, the cheapest is three, most expensive is two, middle of the road is number one, based on local cash. I think, you know, but unless I pay Bowen, you know, to get numbers for two, it's, it is half of that 472. I did ask them that question. So it'd be around, you know, 230 to get the prices for all these things listed out. Done. So, you know, I was, you know, 240 grand to see how much this stuff costs is, is a lot. This, and this number, the, this 100 would get us to the point where there would be a construction estimate, which, that's the number that, that when, when Bowen sets their construction estimate, it, it can't be 10% above that, or it can't, we can't award a contract based on ORC.
Okay, I need to beat this up just a little bit.
Sure.
And probably everybody in the room understands it, but I don't. As it relates to the grant, the 14.6, 14.7, if we're going to use dollar one of that, we're in for the whole thing, correct?
Yes.
So options two and three really would be in lieu of using the grant.
Yes, that's how I would have put it together, yes.
Thank you.
So the question then, if there's a deliverable, is the board interested at this time in assigning a dollar value to this project, which would cost $109,000?
Yes.
So it's. So I'll make up a motion, you'll tell me what I'm saying wrong. At this time, is there a motion to move forward with giving the CEO the authority to re-engage the architects at a cost not to exceed $109,000 to see the design through the completion with some of what Ms. Nunley referenced about not exceeding grant funds or having options to take some stuff out?
I would say that that is a good step. If, if we are going to design deducts and cost and adjustments to design to reduce the budget, Bowen will ask for more money. That could be done later, though, once the board sees the full number.
So is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Spence, is there a second? Motion seconded by Mr. Swanson?
Discussion.
Discussion?
The comment that you made was not exceeding the grant, and we want to make sure that it's understood that that's 80%.
That's the 18 million's 80%, and then there's.
14, 14.7 is 80% of what the cost is. We had, we got a 20% cost, so we got to at least spend the 18,200 to, to make it work.
Yes. Okay. Motion made by Ms. Spence, seconded by Mr. Swanson. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Martin. McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Sheets.
No.
Spence.
Yes.
Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next presentation is Van Pooling.
I am proposing that we postpone this until next month based on the time of the evening it is right now. Unless everyone would like to see it, it's probably about a 20-minute presentation about Van Pooling. I, it's already six, so I don't see, I don't hear any objections. We, we have the presentation. We'll be happy to make it in a future month, but I think it's, it's already late in the evening with a respect for your time. So that'd be Lisa then.
Okay, I'm going to be quick. So just, we're only in the month of February, so there's really nothing significant standing out. Total year-to-date revenues are at $6,496,977, our actual. We budgeted to be at 6.9 million. We're under what we estimated in revenues, partially due to not spending as much, therefore not being able to draw those grants down, which would be additional revenue for us on that, on that end. Our estimated, our, sorry, our expenses are at 3 million, 3.3 million. And then we've only spent about 9.7, just that, that's just our local share for capital, netting us a positive of almost $2.7 million in revenue for the month of February. So it's safe to say when we look at the detail on the next page. Okay, that, we're somewhere in the middle. 2021, we were lower because of COVID. 2022, we estimated to be a little bit higher, and for the most part, when you look at the expenses, we're somewhere in between. And then fares and miscellaneous are going to be a little bit, because in the beginning of 2021, federal and state, we weren't getting the federal, like, we had used up all our grant for 20, and we didn't get the other grant until a couple of months, probably around April, I think it was, in 2021. So that's why the federal on the 2021 side's a little bit lower, and we're a little bit higher for this year on the federal grants. But it'll catch up in '21 because we will get, we will have gotten more money in federal and state in '21 than '22. This will be the last year for that federal money for all the COVID and stuff. And other, this would be, unless there's any questions on the operating side, we're just pretty much kind of stagnant. Everything's just going smoothly. STS, our year-to-date revenues were at 10 million. Our expenses are a little higher. We have fixed costs in there, that's why, the insurance and stuff. So, but we're doing better than what we did in '21, but we're not where we want to be for '22. And if we go on to the next slide, that, we'll skip there. It's pretty simple. On our cash balance, this kind of gives you an idea. Our operating cash balance is what was voted on by the board a few years back, and the minimal amount we keep for our operating. That will change slightly once we get our CAFR done, and we'll determine it based on the expenses. 2022 and prior grant, capital grants, we have a commitment for that 7.389 million. And all the rest of the cash is in other for whatever the board chooses to do with that cash. And then we have about $600,000 that we have set aside for the STS for a total cash balance as of now, about 32. And that will grow a little bit this year due to all the COVID grants and stuff like that. Okay, if we move on to the next one. And this right here just kind of gives you a breakdown based on our capital projects for the years. That really hasn't changed too much. I did note, because it is in the capital, because the grant was applied for in November of '21, so it's on that capital detailed sheet. Doesn't mean we're doing that particular piece. I think it was just set aside, and I kind of put in there the, the numbers. I might be off a little bit. It might have the estimate because we're back in February. This is April, so it could have changed slightly. And then other than that, I really don't have anything else unless there's any questions, but there's nothing significantly going off course for 2022 as of February.
Any questions for Lisa? Is there a motion to approve the February 2022 operating and STS financial statement subject to audit and capital plan review?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. McTomey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zibble. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
McTomey.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Sheets. Spence.
Yes.
Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Looks like I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Ben to talk about the front entryway.
Yes, so item 11B is to discuss or to seek approval for the award of a contract to cook paving and construction for the construction of the front entryway and sidewalk here at HQ. This is a project that was discussed in the building committee and sort of advanced as a priority project. It is important, this was in the original building plans and estimate, so this will be taken out, would be reducing that cost a little bit. As you all have seen, they're in relatively poor condition. They are difficult to traverse for people that are, have a, a, a physical challenge. There's also a pretty significant safety issue with no sort of designated path for people to go from the overflow lot to the main entrance of the building. That does happen with some regularity. With Route 8 stopping here, there are customers using that, just kind of walking in the road, or the, it's not a road, but it's our front driveway, which is pretty busy. So this corrects that issue and does create pedestrian access to both the overflow lot and the bus stop out front. So that's kind of a high priority item for us. We, we see a lot of people that are in interesting places sometimes. I wanted to put up the engineering drawing so the board could at least kind of conceptualize what, what all of this is. So down towards the bottom of the picture is the headquarters building. You could kind of see the sidewalk extending up and to the left with a crosswalk over to the overflow lot. There's not a crosswalk depicted to the bus stop, but it, it is part of the project. The front entry will have to be closed for two to three weeks during construction, and so the main entrance will And so the main entrance will rotate around to the side of the building, which is currently the driver entrance. So there will be some temporary signage and kind of, you know, direction finding for the public that comes here. And that two to three week time period is what Cook Paving indicated the project would take. So we issued an ITB. That is an invitation to bid. Construction projects have to use this format of procurement. So we issue a bid, which means the only criteria that we can use to select the vendor is price, assuming that their documents are correct. We had a pre-bid meeting here at, on March 17th of '22. We had six contractors in attendance. Bids were due April 7th. Only one bid was received, which we never like. In this case, the engineer's estimate was $130,000. Cook Paving's and Construction's bid was 139,910, which is not in excess of 10%. So this is a legal award based on the ORC, so it is a permissible thing for us to do. And because it's based on price, they are the quote low bidder. We did verify their documents are correct. Bowen conducted a pre-award conference with them to ensure that they were meeting all the criteria that the FTA requires. Everything was kosher. Cook Paving, just for kind of reference, we've never done business with them before, but they're a well-known contractor that's pretty big in the Northeast Ohio area. They've done work with the clinic, RTA and Nor, Noaka, I'm sorry, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. So they were very familiar with our paperwork. They referenced RTA in the discussion process. We did put a contingency in, just because when you're, when you're digging things up and moving dirt around, you never know if you might hit something. I don't really expect that to be an issue, but we don't spend it if we don't need it. So the recommendation is approval of the resolution to give me the authority to enter into a contract with Cook Paving for the sidewalk.
Any questions or comments for Ben on the front entryway project?
Can you go back to the drawing, please?
Sure.
So is Cook putting in electrical for you?
They have a subcontractor that'll do the electrical for the little lights. I don't know who that.
And that's all part of the pricing?
Yes.
And then how about the lighting around the flag pole in the front?
That is included in the pricing as well.
Okay, and then landscape island with seating benches?
Yep, everything is all included in the price. Yeah, so we, we took, we cut out a section of concrete and put grass in it because it was cheap.
What, and that'll, that'll be in the front where the pavers are currently?
Yeah. There's a sidewalk kind of around, it's kind of like a donut.
So the pavers are going to go away? It's going to be concrete?
Yes, it'll be just regular plain concrete, just normal color, normal concrete, no, uh, no fanciness or anything.
Are those pavers original?
Those pavers are, yeah, they're from the, the original building in 92.
Whatever.
Yeah. Yes, they are original.
Is someone from your team going to project manage this? Who will be the oversight person? I'm only asking because I just did a project with Cook and it wasn't good.
Part of the fee that we paid Bowen to do this, they are also the project manager, so they'll be here, but we also, this is a pretty sensitive project, since it's in the front of our building, so we will be kind of watching it like hawks and we can all see it out.
And then the only last comment, sorry, is if you can talk to Bowen about adding fiber to the concrete mix to reinforce it. It shouldn't.
Yeah.
Be an additional too much, but for as much snow as we get, plowing, the salting and all that kind of stuff as well.
Yeah, we usually do that for our driveways. We do. I don't recall if we put it, we'll check, but we will add it. It is out there? Okay. Oh, yeah. We'll verify, but we'll make sure that gets into it.
And any other questions or comments on the front walkway? At this time, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the CEO or his designee to enter into and execute a contract with Cook Paving and Construction for the construction of a front entryway and sidewalk at Lake Tran headquarters at a cost not to exceed $150,000?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Mackman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Nunley. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Yes.
Mack to me.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Sheets. Spence.
Yes.
Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, and we will now discuss the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan.
Good evening. So the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan is qualified in Title 49 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 673. The purpose of the P-TAS is to improve the safety of public transportation systems around the country. So Lake Tran's not the only one that has to put one of these together. It's a, an FTA rule. And every year we are required to update the plan and have it approved by our governing body. There we go. So these are the 2022 safety performance measures. The data comes from what Lake Tran reports to the National Transit Database every year. And it's based on a five-year rolling average. This year's plan includes data from 2016 to 2020. And I'm sure as you all know, it's 2022, so this data is, you know, at the time of writing this plan is, you know, already two years old. The 2021 data is not even yet due. So this is the data, the most up-to-date data that we have. And for these seven performance measures. And so to remain compliant with 49 CFR 673, Lake Tran's plan must be updated annually and approved by the board. So is my recommendation that the Lake Tran Board of Trustees approve the 2022 Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The full plan, if you'd like to read it, it's about a 50-page document, is in Govenda with my director's reports.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the resolution approving Lake Tran's 2022 Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan in accordance with Title 49 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 673?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zibble, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Spence. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
Mack to me.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Sheets. Spence. Yes. Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'll turn it over to Ben.
I will be quick. No changes from the past things. Annual report presentation in May, state grant authority. New change, my conversations with Lake Erie College have been very positive. I think there is a very high probability that they will be entering into an agreement with us to operate a shuttle between Painesville and their college campus. So I don't know if this would happen in May, but it is something to put on our radar that we will have to authorize the purchase of a bus for that service. So obviously we don't do that until they've signed an agreement with us, but this wasn't on previous month's thing, so I added it. I don't, wouldn't suspect it would be ready as early as next month, but if they move really quickly, it's possible. I did tell them, you know, bus lead times right now are 18 to 24 months, so we can operate it with another vehicle most likely in the short term, but they need to, if they want a bus, they need to kind of make a decision quick. In June, we will present, we've been talking about the extra federal dollars that are coming from the infrastructure bill. We'll bring our first presentation to the board to talk about what extra services we might recommend for 2023. July, we have federal grant authority, which is a routine item. We have disadvantaged business enterprise, again, a pretty routine item, which just talks about what our DBE goal is for the next couple of years. We will have a purchase of replacement dial-a-ride buses. Our current contract is expired, so this will involve a new contract with a vendor that we select. We have not finished the procurement process like, but you know, there is an 18 to 24 month lead time on vehicles right now. So we probably wouldn't see these until, you know, sometime in 2024. So it's going to be a while. But we're in, we're in a good spot with our current vehicles to get us there. September, same, we have a upgrade to the pay, pay grade tables. Again, no wage actions involved in this, just the tables that say where the wages need to live within. We will most likely be accepting a 2022 audit. I'm sorry, the 2021 audit, that should not say 2022. An approval request for the supplemental parent transit at Breckenridge. In October, fleet and janitorial detailing, fleet, I'm sorry, fleet detailing and janitorial services will go out to bid. We're currently use deep wood. I would expect to continue to retain them. November, we will present the budget and a request approval for our traditional gas and diesel fuel contracts. Most likely another joint procurement with other transit systems. So if any of those are interesting to you, or you want more information about them, or you just want to, hey, explain this to me more, let me know. I'd be happy to talk about them with you. This one, I'll be really brief. So today, actually, Hav was on site replacing the ventilation, the big ventilation units on the roof. So they had a relatively impressive sized crane. And you can see them, you know, these pictures are taken this afternoon. So that project, I think it's supposed to be wrapped up this week or next week? Next week, the crane has two more locations to go for the project to set the big makeup air units. All the smaller units are completed. So you can, on the picture on the right, you can kind of see those little mushroom cap looking things are the other fans that were already done. So hopefully next week, this project will be completed. There's more of the same pictures. Jogger Transit Study, I put a little bit longer description of this in my written CEO report. The consultants are working. They are going to interact with the board members individually and they will eventually be calling you guys for your opinions about things. But I wanted you to think about what some kind of additional coordination with them could look like. And really it falls into two categories. One is improved access for the citizens of both communities. And the other one is decreased admin costs for both communities. So I know we have a, a number of you live in Concord. I imagine a lot of you travel to Chardon to shop and do things. You know, if you use Lake Tran, you can't do that because we don't go to Chardon. Same is true of Geogre Transit. They, you know, people want to come north to access healthcare facilities. So there is a, a general need to move across that border more seamlessly. So a better connection would allow that to happen. That would also be more efficient for us in some cases. Because traveling, depending on where you live in Concord, if you want to go to Walmart, it might be quicker to go to the Chardon Walmart than the Menor Walmart. So, you know, there's lots of different ways that that could be better for us operationally. Additionally, you know, there are some duplications of administrative services, specifically scheduling dispatching payroll, things like that. So merging those two things together more robustly could decrease expenses for both of us. So, you know, when you're thinking about why should we do this, those are really the two categories of thoughts that, that are, that are good to think about. There will obviously be more to come on that. And then that's, that's my report real fast, unless anybody has any questions or has any questions for any of the directors. Sure.
Yeah, a question for you and Keith. Is the fan project, does that include the automated controls?
The controls are going in right now. Gardner is actually installing the controls, but yes, it's included. Correct.
So if any of you want to talk more detail about Geogre Transit, learn more, kind of just get into the weeds a little, feel free to let me know. I'd be love to talk to you about it. It's a relatively complicated thing, especially on the backend. So let me know. I'd be happy to chat about it. That is, concludes my report.
Thank you. And I believe we can skip over an item 14, Special Projects Committee. There was no meeting. We're good. Any old business in the room? Any new business? Is there a motion to adjourn today's Board of Trustees meeting? Motion made by Ms. Nunley, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackman. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Spence. Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Thank.